Time in me, can I say something?
No.
Oh, please. I want to, I want to tell the commission thank you for your Brightspeed.
Okay, well, we'll give you.
Okay, I, 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 I want to thank you for the Brightspeed letter. At the time, I thought that, you know, it was futile and that Brightspeed probably wasn't going to pay any attention to it, but I want you to know if you've not heard that Brightspeed does have a contractor in the north end of the county hanging fiber. So whatever you did had some kind of effect. Not that I'm going to get internet anytime in the near future, but some progress is finally happening my way.
Well, if it makes you feel any better, I got the second email and I responded back and I think all the commissioners got it. Asking him four addresses because of my, pardon expression, but it just sucked as far as finding out anybody's house, so. We'll see how they respond. He's responded every time within just a few days, so we'll see. Okay, now.
Now you can start timing me, okay. First, just let me say I respect and appreciate all of you. But as I've said in the past, the Chilton County Commission as a governmental body has a long history of not being transparent or entirely truthful with its citizens. And that said, there's been some concern about the public hearing that was scheduled for tomorrow night. The biggest being that it was never discussed at a work session prior to advertising. I understand now that maybe there was an issue with needing a document signed before a certain date, but the fact was never clearly stated to the public. Public notice of hearing was publicized one hundred percent by the book as required by law. But there's a big difference between doing what's legal and doing what's right. How many citizens get the Clanton advertiser? How many read the legal page? How many scanned the fine print with a magnifying glass? I did because I knew what I was looking for. The bottom of that notice states that you can access a copy of the maintenance agreement at the commission office. I made two separate trips to courthouse. And in the end, I refuse to give up today and call Commissioner Williams why there to help me get this document. I also had to fill out a records request form and pay twenty dollars. This public notice of hearing was not on the county website and not on any bulletin boards in the courthouse. I would like to suggest to the commission that in the future, we investigate and use every resource in our toolbox to communicate with our citizens. Especially about a hearing that involves giving taxpayer funds to a private entity. Might we not use social media and Facebook to promote public hearings? Can the county website be used to possibly allow the working citizen to access documents digitally for free? So instead of physically having to go to the courthouse, this could be, could be done from the convenience of your home. And lastly, I'm also concerned about the transparency around the phrase lend its credit or grant public funds or things of value in the public notice. I think the citizens have the right to know the price of any agreement granting taxpayer money or assets to a private company. It's misleading to tell the taxpayer the cost of something without including labor hours. It's a disservice to our county employees to assume their time is not a billable asset or a thing of value. The taxpayers should know how many hours their employees are working on a private company's property and what that is costing them. Finally, government is of, for, and by the people and all people should be able to participate and I hope the commission can encourage that. Thank you.
So you'll know, I talked to our attorney today and he said that sometimes the commission should maybe use more. Let me see, I won't say this now. Use more means to get the word out and use more. He said that we could, the, the entire document is public information. The entire document for, for a public hearing is to be available to the public. Now, I'm going to ask, and I meant to ask Tiffany today since she's our guru, if a PDF of such can be put on our website and.
It's on the website.
The PDF is on there? Okay.
Not the maintenance agreement part of it, but the.
The public notice is on it now, yes. The public notice is on it now.
No, I was talking about the entire document, okay. Well, then we need to, we need to make sure next time we got there, if we can download it, put it on there and people, people can get it. Thank you.
So the public shouldn't have to pay?
No, public should be able to get that document because it's a hearing and it's something that we're requiring and asking for information. Now, if it's something the public is hunting and the staff has got to go research and find stuff, that's a totally different ballgame.
Did you have to pay for something that we were?
Well, I paid twenty dollars today.
It's, it's per page.
No, I paid twenty dollars. That's a set fee. That was the set fee because I had to, um, request a, uh, public records.
She asked for a copy of it. She didn't ask to view it. She wanted a copy. And the form says a, it says on the form and has since the commission passed the resolution.
Yeah.
But it should, it should, it should have been on our page.
Public record says she can come to the, to the commission office and view it. It didn't say get a copy of it.
I, I don't need a refund. That's fine. I don't, I don't want any.
It's not a public record yet.
I, I don't, I don't want anything with that, but.
Well, that's, that's something I was going to say. I don't think that would come under the Public Records Act as far as having to file that paperwork. This is a whole learning curve, everybody. I'm going to get more information from Ben between now and tomorrow night and make it clarified, but he did say the entire document should be available for the public.
I just want this.
And nobody knew that. I'm not faulting anybody here. Nobody knew this until I asked him the question.
I just want this to make this easier for citizens to be able to understand what's going on, to be able to access information.
Well, I think that's going to happen.
Before you leave, I, I just don't like to be told that I'm not being transparent. Uh, that's one of the things, huh, I, I truly want to be as all of my peer commissioners. We're not trying to hide anything or not be clear and transparent to you. And I would say if, was that supposed to be on the page or no?
I didn't know. I, it should, it's, I think we need to pass a resolution that will be on there going forward, the entire PDF. The PDF that was on there, I think Tiffany explained was, uh, just what she had, the information she had.
It was just that document explaining what the public hearing was, but it wasn't the maintenance.
Yeah, it was just a public notice.
So can, can we, in this instance, and I'm not asking to waive it because if it's something that we should have produced or part of, I, I'm just like that because, uh, they're not, they're not, we're not trying to hide nothing.
I just want to make this easier for everybody else in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's in the public documents. Now we have the sheriff.
Is she not here?
Is she not here?
No, she's not here. She, uh, somebody brought me a note that she was, uh, not going to be here tonight. Okay, Sheriff, it's all yours.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. How are y'all tonight?
Thank you.
Oh, tonight I'll be asking for a resolution to hire Virginia Alsero as a corrections officer, be added to the payroll. I'll also be asking for a resolution to hire Trenton Page as deputy sheriff, also to be added to payroll. Be asking for a resolution for the chairman to sign our documents. Uh, usually it's a DECA, but I guess his name's changed, CTSB agreement, or traffic safety grant that the state gives us. And also be asking for a resolution for the patrol vehicle purchase for the next fiscal year. And I'll also be asking for a resolution for the chairman to be able to sign our SRO agreement.
Okay, any questions, Sheriff? All right, short and sweet. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Uh, commission office, Ms. Sylvia.
First on the list is the chamber membership directory in the past, um, and of course, the one you got was in black and white, but in the past, you've gotten this, uh, half page, which we have done in, uh, the last few times and that if, the prices on there have several, but six fifty is for the half page if you wish to have the same picture put on there for the directory, if you want it in the directory.
Anybody got any questions on that?
Same one we got last year, huh?
Play more. Okay.
Uh, budget is on the list. Um, I think, uh, we've all combed over the budget many times and, uh, I think we had everything, um, uh, taken care of with the exception of healthcare for, uh, family, family costs.
All right, yeah, I think we can.
And I am trying to find the numbers real quickly. Thank you. Of course, the, uh, budget is, uh, currently at thirty-two. I'm sorry, thirty-seven, two, zero, five, seven, eighty-five. If we, um, add fifty percent of the family healthcare to that, the, it changes it by, uh, seventy-nine, nine, ninety-two. If we change it to sixty-five percent, it'll add one hundred fifteen, three, sixty-eight to the commission budget.
Anybody got discussion on that?
I, I would, and I don't know if I can do this, but I'd like to see if the the sheriff had an opinion on it as far as where the fifty versus sixty-five puts us in competitiveness to.
You going to come back up, John?
In competitiveness to our surrounding counties that we, we losing employees to.
Yeah, I, I don't know exactly that, that number. Uh, I know, I think Calera is about the only other one I can go to. I think they took about eighty, eighty percent of it. I think it's what the city took on themselves of family coverage. So that's all I really know.
Okay.
Uh, but as far as, you know, the rest of it, I'm not really sure. Because I, I just do know we've had down through the years, we've had several that has turned us down because of, you know, family coverage insurance. They can go somewhere else and it'd be a lot cheaper.
Yeah, when it takes almost a week's paycheck to pay your insurance for your family, it's pretty tough.
Right.
And retention. What was the diff, what was the difference in the figures, Ms. Sylvia?
If we paid, uh, fifty percent, seventy-nine, nine, ninety-two, so right, eight dollars short of eighty thousand.
Okay.
If we did sixty-five percent, one hundred fifteen, three, sixty-eight. A thirty-five thousand dollar difference.
About thirty-five thousand.
Or at one point we were discussing uptake.
On fifty percent and sixty-five percent, I, I don't remember those numbers. Uh, those that might take advantage of it.
We, we have eleven employees and we, we put eleven additional employees. We put it in the commission budget, so if we do, um, you know, have more people, we can move it throughout the budget where it's needed.
Chances are it's going to increase how many apply that are on our payroll now for the family. Because some of them have an insurance that's, uh, they're paying outside.
I think it won't be more new hires than your existing.
Yeah.
I think you'll still have some, you know, the current employees is going to take it, but yeah, I mean, new hires, I mean, that's always a big thing as far as insurance and stuff and it, like I said, it has down through the years cost us probably some good quality employees.
Oh, yeah, it, it, that was the topic in twenty-twenty during the campaign was retention and how many people we were losing due to pay and insurance.
I wouldn't mind seeing us try, uh, the sixty-five and we can, we can work on the numbers tomorrow in the office and make a recommendation tomorrow.
I'm concurring with that because I think, I think Autogee County, I think, is right at seventy-five percent. I talked to a couple about this and I can't remember what they said. I should have made notes.
I know Bev County is, is, it's pretty high, uh, Calera's is, but I'm not really sure about any of the others.
Well, I think the sixty-five percent is something we need to look at if we can make it happen.
With these numbers with eleven, which is.
Okay. And what if it goes to twenty-five? Employees. I mean, where's that going to put us? We need to be looking at that when we're talking about increasing.
I talked to Terry, the HR director, and he doesn't anticipate it even doubling, but.
Okay. All right.
It's one of the drawing factors. Like I said, when we trying to get people from other agencies and stuff, that's always one thing. The question they ask is what's our family coverage insurance?
Well, if it does, if it happens that we see that we've made a bad mistake come next year and it's going to be pulling teeth, we can always back up.
I think you're going to have to look at it each year anyways because of the increase in healthcare.
Yeah, yeah.
Exactly.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
So you're going, you're going, y'all are going to put, get it tomorrow?
Yeah, we, we just got to, we got to decide whether we do fifty or sixty-five and it just adds to the budget for the budget, for the budget vote.
Yeah, we can't deliberate it tonight, but we'll put it on the table tomorrow night and we'll beat it to death and decide if it's going to be fifty or sixty-five, whatever the majority wants. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Uh, this will be our second meeting coming up for the nominations from the Chilton Water Authority. We have Raspis and Kelly that they want to reappoint. If there are any other nominations to be accepted. Purchase additional scanners for Milner Project. That's not a done deal, but there's a possibility that we, we may have to have five additional scanners. And the cost to five additional scanners would be five thousand, fifty-three dollars and five cents. The money is available in our commission budget for that. But just in case, uh, we wanted to go ahead and get that approved and use it in this year's budget.
Okay, any questions? Okay.
The next two are for animal control. Uh, one is to remove, uh, Vivian Abernathy from, from payroll effective August twenty-second. And the other is to advertise and fill the animal care specialist position. That is one of the newer, um.
It would basically be the vacancy of, uh, Vivian.
Yeah, but that is one of the new job descriptions.
But that is a new job description, so we, I think we, we, uh, the former title was Tech One.
And so far, that's all I have.
Okay. All right, uh, you handling Parks and Recreation? Donald's not here.
I don't, I don't think, um, I got a call today. I don't think that, um, it needs a resolution. I think there was already a standing agreement on it.
Okay. Uh, but what about the construction permit?
I don't think it, I don't think we need it right now either.
All right. Nick Bolton, EMA.
Um, I had two things on the agenda. I'm going to strike the first one off. We had some issues coming up with that. We need to basically reevaluate on it. Um, so just the second one, uh, and I have been working with Heath and Matt, uh, today about the gravel and stuff. Uh, but it was said that I needed to get you guys and lady approval before I get them to, uh, come out and estimate and, and get some gravel out there. So, um, I guess I need a resolution to let the road department get us some gravel for our new building.
Okay.
And that's all I got.
Think the, uh, EMA was going to give you for the gravel?
Well, we got to do this first.
And we were, and the request was to haul the ground.
Request was for everything.
Oh, to pay for the gravel too?
Yeah.
Have I come out with the new names, the budget?
Uh, yeah, that's my.
It is or isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Oh, so you can get PO for it?
After they, if they give a resolution to approve you.
Oh, he's got, he's talking about PO for the rock. You're talking about PO for the entire job. Y'all are on two different sides.
You have got to nestle it up. I don't know if Matt's giving to you.
He has, yes.
Four hundred tons, about sixteen truckloads. Yeah, so you have the estimate.
Have the, yes.
EMA building.
EMA building. Rock around it.
And a requisition or a resolution for us to haul it.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
Are we, are we tracking on that?
It's got to be about eight inches up next to the front of the building. There's a big drop off.
Sixteen truckloads.
Eight inches, eight inches ain't going to stay there, I can just tell you, unless you putting something in it and packing it because then.
He, Matt said he would run over it, smooth it out pretty good.
What type of rock you talking about?
Fifty-seven stone.
And you talked about B base?
Uh, or three, or three quarter.
You talking about B fifty-two?
I was having the impression it was eight twenty-five B.
Eight twenty-five B.
That's the B base. Just the DOT.
Is that crusher run?
It is crusher, but it's got also some, some rocks in it about like that. And you roll it out and we got a roller. You'll be there. We put it on all my parking lots.
Whatever works.
We put on the roads.
I just need gravel so it don't wash away.
Okay. All right, you got the eight, eight twenty-five B.
Well, that's what, that's what you.
No, I'm saying eight twenty-five B is a rock.
That's correct. That's what we're going to do.
All right.
We're good.
Okay.
So the que, my, my question to, uh, Sylvia, do you, do you have the resolution that's needed captured?
Uh, I'm not sure I do.
Okay. So can we, we'll, can we, we'll square that up tomorrow. We just know that we need some rock over at the EMA, but we, if we can get that resolution properly.
Yeah, we've done this on one and I, I actually, I was thinking we had a resolution that covered this. All they had to do was work between the departments.
Well, that's my assumption. That's why I didn't bring, uh, because I don't want to go through that conversation.
Yeah, so I pulled the resolution and he wanted it approved where it's going to be.
Do I now?
He wanted it approved where it was going to be paid at.
Yeah, that's what he's saying. Who budgets it coming out of?
Okay, so that's basically what the resolution needs to say is what departments or what fund is going to pay for this. Not necessarily the work to be done, but what fund's going to pay for it. All right, we'll put that up there. Y'all know the work to be done, just do it. We'll get, these ladies here will figure out the fund and that'll be the resolution.
Okay.
Simple enough.
Yeah, just want to know who going to pay.
Okay.
That'd be two resolutions.
All right, we need a, we need, uh, one for materials.
One for hauling.
One for hauling. One for hauling.
Correct. Yay, I got it.
Leave that to y'all, handle funds. Everything's covered. Okay. Transit, Kiantay, DZRNT.
Good evening, the commission.
How you doing?
I'm doing well, doing well. A couple of resolutions I got. Uh, new hire to replace. Uh, I'm losing a couple of workers. I'm actually losing one to, uh, the road crew that starts on second. Uh, so looking to refill that position as well. Um, also looking to bring in one more to kind of help with the load. We kind of got hit with a bind last week of, uh, one calling out and it kind of put us all in a little little uncomfortable posi, uh, position there for a little bit. Uh, looking to reclassify, uh, one of our tenured drivers who's been there. He knows the people, he knows the routes. Uh, and he was actually also the backup, uh, dispatcher there for a while as well. Uh, so looking to try to reclassify him. Looking to advertise and fill, uh, the, uh, full-time position as well as two part-time transit drivers. We're losing, uh, income and revenue to, uh, out of town trips for doctor's appointments. Uh, right now, we only have them scheduled for Tuesdays and Thursdays and we can only, uh, commit to one driver, driving one person. Uh, and it's kind of something that I would like to change to help try to bring a little bit more revenue to the, uh, uh, to the department. Uh, looking to.
Let me, may I ask a question? This reclassification Jacob Bedford, just need to stress that's temporary. Just a temp, like a temporary hire, this is a temporary reclassification.
Yes, well, we can do a temporary reclassification or we can make it, uh, full-time whichever one the commission sees fit.
Can we do that? We'd have to, do we not have to open it up for?
You're reclassifying him just temporarily to be his dispatcher until you get one hired, is that correct?
Correct.
And then he goes back to be a driver.
Well, we can look at either one or applies.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. He's got, he has to apply.
He, I think he's, he's wanting to apply, but I'm just doing the, uh, my due diligence.
Sure.
Yeah.
Putting it out there.
Well, I just do it and get the clarification that it is temporary because he, to be the dispatcher, he's got to apply for it.
Yes, sir.
But anybody, okay, all right, next.
Yes, sir. Uh, I need the, uh, chairperson, uh, the chair commissioner to sign an agreement we have with DHR. Um, they set aside a budget, uh, every year, uh, that, that the budget is roughly around three grand, but they use us for their services, uh, for whatever they may need in that situation. Uh, but we have to sign an agreement every year, uh, because they, like I said, they set that money aside in their budget. You know, we go from there. Um, also asking, uh, giving you an update on the video software on the buses. Uh, we actually dug into the platform today, uh, trying to sign up. There's no cost. Uh, the video, uh, capability on those buses was already given to us when we purchased the buses two, three years ago. Uh, so it's just a point of getting it turned on and getting it working effectively. Uh, it's looking what we're trying to do. So just asking for the commission to give me permission to find out those revenues of what we need to do and avenues of what I need to do to make sure everything properly maintains. And also, uh.
I'm a little confused on that one. So we have the ability to have cameras or we have the cameras, we just don't have the service?
We have the, we have the cameras and the software already on the buses.
Yeah.
It's the point of getting them turned on and making sure that everything stays.
But you need permission from the commission to get them turned on? They're already on the bus.
Just let me act as liaison on that standpoint and find out information so we can get this stuff checked. Also, uh, another thing I would like to bring up, uh, to the commission is about the advertisement. Uh, we're using a company called Infinity Transit Advertising. Uh, right now, we're in an uncomfortable position with them. It's a seventy, thirty split, seventy being their way, thirty percent our way. Uh, so for simple math, if we were to get ten thousand dollars in advertising, we're only awarded three grand. And the company collects seventy, or seven thousand dollars, which is seventy percent of that. Uh, so I'm just asking the, uh, commission to give me the ability to explore different revenues, uh, as well as propose some different revenues that may be more beneficial to the department.
I think you can explore them and just bring us a better deal if you find it. You know, we don't have to give permission. You got car block.
Yes, sir. Uh, and that's all I got.
I mean, that's, I, I think everybody here would agree with that. If you bring it to us and it's a better deal. You'll get seven more votes.
I think Commissioner Hall was talking about it. It's possible we might could do it ourselves.
Yeah.
And, and say, and increase the revenue by seventy percent.
Oh, yeah, okay.
We talked about it.
Yeah.
All right, Heath Sexton, engineer, road department.
All right, thank you, sir. Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Good deal.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, commission. Thank you for your time tonight. Um, we opened bids for the, uh, County Road sixteen improvement project, RA dash CCP, eleventh dash six seventy-seven dash twenty-five. Friday morning and we're pleased with the results.
Let us make that clear. That's County Road sixteen between thirty-seven and fifteen.
Correct.
Okay. They won't know what that number is.
And this is a, uh, reconstruction and paving project. We received, um, bids from, uh, Chilton Contractors Incorporated, Asphalt Contractors, Wiregrass Construction Company Incorporated, Dunn Construction in AIPAC, Alabama Incorporated. Uh, of the five bids, there were three, three, the lowest ones were very close, within about ten thousand dollars. Uh, the lowest received was from Chilton Contractors of one million, eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and forty-five cents. All bids were, were good, had all, uh, bonds and e-verify and all required, uh, documents were s- signed and sealed. So, um, on the first page, I have a resolution there to, uh, to accept the bids from the five contractors. And below it, uh, from our recommendation, uh, requesting resolution to award the contract for the project to, uh, Chilton Contractors who submitted the lowest bid. And, uh, along with the fact of the chairman and the, uh, commission chairman and the, uh, uh, Chilton County Commission Administrator to be able to authorize and execute all documents necessary to carry out the intent of the contract.
You did say he could start winning, wins, you're right.
Hopefully. I think, um.
First time I've seen you speechless.
Once we, uh, uh, get it approved, we'll send them out, send out the, uh, contract documents for them to sign and for them to get their performance and payment bonds in order. As long as, as well as pro- provide the insurance certificate. Uh, once they provide that, we'll give them a notice to proceed.
Okay. Anybody got any questions on that? That's a good deal.
Also, on the third page, uh, each year, uh, when the rebuild Alabama Act was passed, we, uh, it required that the counties provide certain reports. And one of the reports is the yearly, um, county transportation plan, uh, which has to be adopted by, um, August, end of August each year. And so, um, this is the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-six county transportation plan. It involves closing out the County Road twenty-three project and, uh, and, uh, the County Road sixteen project. Uh, and as we had talked about in the, um, budget hearings, we should be left with a, a balance and, uh, the county later on decides to amend this, we can always, we can amend it or we can carry this over to next year. Uh, we looked at some larger projects, so. Uh, we looked at some larger projects, so, um, it'll be in the, commission will have the option to do that's. So, uh, request approval of this fiscal year twenty twenty-six county transportation plan. Uh, that is along with the map as well. And then on the last page, uh, the last commission meeting, we approved the, uh, contractors' annual report for Rebuild Alabama. And, um, this just updates, if we were to approve the, uh, County Road sixteen project, it just shows that we'll be using Chilton Contractors. And so, um, I, I spoke to Makisha Sylvia about it, I don't know if we want to amend the minutes to include this, um, last page instead of the previous one now that's, that it'll be finalized? Or if we wanna just...
Was it in, was it in our last meeting?
It was.
We can correct it before we adopt the minutes, or do that, take the minutes out of the consent agenda, do them separate.
Okay.
And you can either put them under you, Sylvia, if you don't through, or put them under me? Alright?
Also, uh, request approval to remove employees Kenny Gore Jr. from the payroll effective August twentieth, as well as, uh, Lyle Wilton from payroll effective August twelfth.
Okay.
Also, approval for a position filled with new hire Marcus Henderson. Um, at the position and pay rate and effective date is shown on the attachments.
Okay. Have we already posted for these first two, or do we need to go and do that to tomorrow night too? The positions for Kenny Gore and Lyle Littleton?
Unless he's already down.
We have, we, we have, um, we call it open, open job postings.
Okay, you are, yeah, okay. Just making sure. Okay.
And, um, just wanna get some project updates. Uh, we have the contract for the County Road, um, uh, ninety-five and six thirty-three and seven sixty-four project now. And, uh, we'll be planning a, um, a, uh, pre-construction meeting this Friday. And hopefully the, the Wiregrass has talked about starting possibly even as early as next week. And, uh, when they come up there, also we wanna try to knock out the punch list items on County Road forty-nine. And hopefully the guard rail, we've been told, the, uh, guard rail pieces will be in next week hopefully, so the guard rail company can come and replace the guard rail on the covert on County Road forty-nine. The, uh, County Road twenty-three project, FDR project, has the G-treatment and we're giving it the thirty days cure time before the, uh, contractor comes and puts the, uh, the, uh, wearing surface on it, asphalt wearing surface. Uh, and, uh, the caution light Maplesville, uh, we've been in contact with them regularly, they've been trying to get a few parts. And, uh, they expect those to be in by the first of next week. So then they'll let us know when they're gonna schedule to put that caution light up. Uh, we are, uh, getting our final documentation in for the County Road sixteen guard rail project, local road safety initiative, uh, uh, grant project that we received for the four sites on sixteen. And, uh, it was announced the, uh, annual A-trip applications have opened up, I think they're due in mid-November. Past two years, we've applied for improvements to the intersection of State Road one ninety-one and County Road fifty due to the, um, the reoccurring accidents that continue to occur there. So we'll be taking a look at those accidents to see if we've had any this past year or, and looking out throughout the county for other, um, issues that, uh, might be good, um, make for good applicants for the A-trip two. So if you know of any, the A-trip two involves, um, applying for up to two million dollars for improvements to a state road. Turn lanes, um, traffic signals, realignment. Um... Any other questions on the project updates?
They have a completion date on twenty-three.
Thirty days, get a wearing service?
Well, they have to wait a minimum of thirty days.
Yeah.
From the time the G-treatment's put down, I think it was put down about two weeks ago.
Two weeks, okay.
So another two more weeks before they come in, hopefully, uh, depending on their schedule.
Okay.
Um, we do have a resolution to provide county services for the Parks and Recreation, a special resolution, so the only thing, um, that resolution requires is that the, uh, directors send us an email or send us writing requesting services. So I think that's what Commissioner Perkins was talking about. The last resolution for all other departments was that they, um, come before the commission and ask approval, uh, and mainly like Makisha said, for the purpose of, of, um, determining where the funding will come from. Um, and in the past, um, each department has usually provided a P.O., their own P.O. for any materials. And the, uh, and any, any work the county road department has done, um, has been, um, just pulled from the general funds that typically come to the road department each year, they're already coming our way. We just kind of, uh, set them, set, set certain funds aside just to, for reimbursement for the auditors, to know that, um, we're not using gasoline funds.
Okay. Well, we need, what I'm thinking is, we need to simplify out this where it's not such a hassle. One department gets something from another and you to deal with another one. The main thing is making sure the ladies have what they need in advance to know which funds to deal with. Uh, and I think that would be between the departments to figure out what they're gonna do. Well, man, yeah, you, EMA will be paying for it. Yeah, uh...
For the materials.
And the hauling.
No, he paid for the hauling.
That's what I mean, you'll be paying for materials and the hauling.
Okay.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah, he's got money.
Heath, Matt, are there any updates on thirty-seven and Little River? Cause I did get a text.
Um, I think where we left it on three, three fifty and thirty-seven, Little River, was that, um, myself and my assistant engineer are going to ride down to the road, take a look at it to see what improvements are needed for a long-term solution, uh, certain such as what, with the right of way we need, or do we need to realign the, uh, horizontal curve? And then we would reach out to the, uh, to the adjoining property owners, as well as Little River, to see if we could have discussion on, on, if there could be some kind of work together to, to find this permanent solution. And so, uh, uh, I was, I wasn't able to go last week, but I'm hoping to go this week. And that is the update, um... That's the permanent solution update.
Now, we spoke of the speed control, didn't we?
Yeah.
On thir- so...
Yeah, we need, uh...
Can we get that?
Well, we need to pass a resolution, and I didn't think about it, I had it on the agenda, we need to pass a resolution posting a speed, changing the speed limit in that area if we're gonna do that. And I don't think it's a bad idea at all.
Yeah, we can do that.
Uh, as far as the road, uh, Heath and Matt were gonna go look at it, gonna call, I was gonna get with them, gonna look at it, knock something around. Then we were gonna get with Little River.
Right.
And pitch what we thought to them. If they didn't like it, well, then...
Because school has started and so I had, uh, a text this afternoon about the speed and the school buses. And I knew we would discuss it tonight, so I felt like we commissioners, we need to get on the speed at least, can't we? Um, what y'all think, yeah? Yeah.
Yeah, I'm thinking more, I'm thinking more the speed limit of the truck.
Trucks.
Going in and out and around that curve where the lady lives that was here the other day, other night? Slow them down.
And another one.
Cause they're not going by, what, three quarters of a mile from the pit to thirty-seven?
Nineteen.
Okay, one mile. They can't run fifteen miles an hour for one mile. Yeah, yeah, that's right.
The, uh, speed limit on, on unposted gravel roads is thirty-five miles per hour by, uh, state laws, is there a certain, certain speed that you, uh, were interested in?
Fifteen, fifteen mile an hour.
Be glad to, uh, be glad to do that, Commissioner Perkins.
Can we do that tomorrow?
I, I think I'll, uh, I'm gonna ask, an amendment to the bu- agenda tomorrow night? And we had Spinnaroo, Spinnaroo, put that down and let's go ahead and adopt that for fifteen mile. Do you have a sign, or you gotta order fifteen mile an hour sign, Heath?
Oh, we ha- we, we should have those, we should have those with the signpost and the signs, so we should have put them up.
Okay.
That's a start, thank you.
Yep, I appreciate your reminding.
Sure.
Alright, anything else?
Uh, only thing I was gonna ask is that just the, everything should be in the consent agenda except for these two resolutions. And I was just gonna ask if it'd be okay from Sylvia to present them, so I could go to a baseball practice if it's possible?
Sure.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Uh, unless somebody else is needs...
Good to go.
Okay, now, now go watch them youngins play ball. They only young one time. Okay, alright, Commissioner... Uh, County Road three fifty, from thirty-seven to the entrance of the pit, Little River Materials. I did get that name right, didn't I, Little River, yeah.
Little River.
Are you gonna, you gonna post it past there, you gonna post it back to thirty-five, put a speed limit sign back up where it's unposted now? You gonna have to put a thirty-five, yeah, okay. Yeah, he'll have to put one up.
Well, my text was, the family said from three fifteen, now y'all know this road's better than me.
No, we can't go down that for fifteen.
You, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, no.
Going back towards fifteen, back towards fifteen.
The thing we need to slow down is the trucks, the trucks is what, the, the problem is, if we need to go further down, then they need to come and ask us about that section, but I'm not, I'm not gonna agree to go to three fifteen.
Nah, not three fifteen, fif- towards fifteen.
Well, yeah.
Towards fifteen.
From thirty-seven to the Little River.
Towards fifteen, yeah.
That's, that's going that direction.
Yeah, Little River entrance is towards fifteen, yeah.
I gotta ride out there though, so I know what I'm talking about.
Alright, so we got fifteen miles an hour from the pit, or to the pit of Little River Materials.
Yeah, to the entrance to Little River Materials, you don't say pit to the entrance, it'd be fine. To County Road thirty-seven.
There's one entrance.
Yeah.
So that'll take you.
You put that under me.
Maybe wanna write that, any entrance. Any entrance, they may, they may come out with another entrance on that road.
Yeah.
Uh, they'd have to move their scale, the scale is up there at that entrance, so they'd... We, uh, it ain't gonna happen our lifetime, I don't think.
Okay.
Trying to work my way on six, on three sixty-one. Okay, Commissioner Billingsley?
Yes, sir. Uh, I brushed this in, I got a phone call at two, two thirty-eight Friday afternoon saying that the control panel, Gap of the Mountain Station two was burnt up. Nick, you wanna come on up, cause we gonna have some questions. And I tried to get a hold of Nick, and of course, he did call me back, but I couldn't get it, I mean, I knew I was on a timeline to get this on for tonight. But, uh, this control panel is, is burnt up and Nick can tell you more about it than I can. And I think that we've got a price for, is it eighteen hundred and forty-three dollars for Gap of the Mountain Station two?
That's correct.
Okay, but that night, late afternoon, talking to Nick, I found out, we have two more fire departments, storm shelters with a panel that's been, is burnt up. Possibly hit by lightning, we don't know.
Yeah, they really didn't give an, a reason, uh, lightning would be a, a stretch. Um, so most of the generators are in a, a steel box, basically that's locked to keep people from stealing the batteries or any components on the generator. And so, I'm guessing, and what the maintenance tech thinks is it probably just got really hot. Those panels, there's probably about that much space between the control board and the top of that steel, and the control board is just plastic. So it just, it warped it, looked like somebody took a butane torch to it and just warped it up. There's three of them that are like that, and they're probably indirect sunlight is why.
Yeah, if it's lightning, it'd have been burned.
It'd have burnt the whole thing, that's right. This was exterior melting, not like interior frying a circuit board, yeah.
But, as long as we haven't had any storms and we haven't had to use those shelters at night and lost power, generator not gonna work, so they'd be in the dark. So that's why I rushed this one in, so that's why I rushed this one in. And then like I say, later that evening, talking to Nick, found out there's two more. Then also talking to him, we figured out that you do have this in twenty-six's budget to repair the other two?
Well, twenty-six's budget was to repair all three.
All three, yeah. So, what I talked to Nick about today is, since the new budget's gonna start in five weeks, go ahead and line the company up for the first week in October, then it'll be in our October, next year's budget to repair those. So...
I, I thought you said this, it's in your, it's not in your current budget, it's in your budget proposal.
Proposal in the budget, if we approve the budget, then it'll be in there to do it. So, we'll only be looking at four weeks and hopefully, we don't have a storm or lose power and then somebody wants to get in them, cause they're gonna be in the dark when you go in there, if there's no power on.
An emergency, let them go and get it fixed now and fix the money.
Yeah.
When it, when it gets to where we can fix it.
Well, did you look, did y'all look at do it, going in and doing it now, Butch?
Well, that, that was my next line, I was gonna come up with, go ahead and do it all three of them now. And... What are we looking like on all three, um, about six thousand?
Um, Enterprise number two is twenty-six forty, and then Gap number two and Union Grove number two are both at eighteen hundred.
Eighteen hundred.
Six, six thousand.
Four hundred and forty.
Uh, where would that, if we went in and did it now, where would that money come from? Okay, so that's not gonna cause a hassle with the, okay, I think we need to go in and do it then.
Alright, well, that's what I wanna do, I just wanted to get, I'm sorry. I just wanted to give you a history of where we are in Hawaii, I'm here, and Hawaii was late getting with Tiffany or ever who I got with Friday, don't even remember.
Yeah, I know, I got questioned Friday evening when I got here about it.
Well...
I said, no, that's an emergency, put it on there.
It is, it was, and I tried to explain that.
Yeah.
And I've talked to Nick and now that he knows that I'm the liaison for the EMA, maybe we won't have this problem of being delayed because Enterprise and what Gap, uh, Union Grove, they've been out for some time now.
Well, all three of these have, they were, so we have a maintenance contract with Taylor Power Services. Uh, they come by and they perform maintenance on the generators, um, they'll, basically the way we have it set up now, because we were in the middle of a year with another company, they're gonna do a, a large service and what they call a small service. So they'll come out for the small every six months, and then on the year mark, they'll come out for the large, so that the fluids and the filters and all that stuff's being changed yearly. And then they'll come in in six months and basically just inspect it and make sure nothing is wrong. So it's two different kinds of services, but things are hitting at different times because of the time period. Um, that contract renews yearly, it's in the budget to renew again. They found this when they were doing the maintenance back in May. But as the invoices are coming in, they're giving me stuff, we're, we were already over budget in my storm shelter budget because of all the maintenance that had to be done to these generators, where they were not being checked off like they should have. Um, so we were behind the eight ball, and so we fixed as much as we could, and these were the last ones to get checked off is why it came up late.
Okay.
And because I was already out of budget money.
So it was avoidable, had we...
Uh, well, I don't wanna say avoidable because it's heat, you know what I mean, in, inside of the steel.
Are there, is there, is there a way to ventilate those?
Sir?
Is there a way to, to help some ventilation?
They have, they've got slats on the side of it.
Well, can they be opened up?
They can.
And I would suggest...
After talking with Taylor, most people don't put these things on them anymore because of this reason.
Yeah, that's why I wanna know the origin, I wanna know the origin of it.
You got an engine inside a metal case and it's gonna get hot and it's plastic, yeah, I, I think, and you can't leave them open, cause I can tell you, they won't, generator won't even be there.
Yeah, right, cause they're, they're basically on the concrete pad just bolted down.
But if somebody can open that up, cause I've opened one up in the Breena when I went down and looked at it, and they're not that hard to open.
No.
And run them, and that'd save those things.
Well, they, they're usually on the automatic timer where they'll run at least once a week. So they do run, but as far as inspecting them, our, the maintenance company only comes out once a...
Oh, I didn't know, okay, cranking them once a month, that's good.
Don't you think it'd be a good idea to get the maintenance, all the maintenance for, all of them lined up before they do them all at one time?
They do, it's throughout the year though.
That's what you said.
They, they don't, so what he's... They, they don't, so what he's doing is he's basically doing, you're saying come out and do change the fluids all at the same time?
Yeah, and say a week, change the fluids and all of them in the county.
That's, that's what he does.
And then the next time he comes out for his next inspection, do everything in the county. I s- I, I thought you were saying he's coming like, maybe once in January, once in March or April.
No, no, no. He comes, he comes and does, he called, they call it a large maintenance or a, one's preventative and one is, I guess, maintenance, is what they're saying. So they're coming and changing the fluids within about two weeks is when they do it, cause there's sixteen of them. And then, six months later, they just come back and check them, just look at them, basically.
Okay, so you gonna, there's a motion to go ahead and get this done?
Yeah, and it'll be for, uh, Gap of the Mountain Station Two, generator panel. Uh, Enterprise, is Enterprise Station One or Station Two? Station Two. And Union Grove Station?
Two.
Two. All of them are Station Two.
Be paid for out of general fund.
To be paid for out of general fund, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Nick.
I'm good.
It's all okay.
Okay. Alright, Commissioner Bones not here, Commissioner Childers.
Nothing tonight.
Commissioner Hall.
I think.
Commissioner Henry.
Yeah, I, I don't really have anything, but I, I would like to say that, um, just to remind the public to go out and vote tomorrow, got a mayor's race, see ya Clanton, I'd just like, what, wish both of them candidates good luck. Hope the best for both of them.
Alright.
Commissioner Perkins.
Yeah, I don't, um, so, let me just briefly give a rundown here somewhere. Um, tomorrow, we had a scheduled meeting, or a scheduled public hearing to occur tomorrow during the regular, you know, um, meeting at six thirty. That is gonna be, I'm gonna end up making a motion, I guess, at the front of the meeting or either during my time to remove that public hearing. Is that not right?
I'm gonna read it and make sure it's correct.
You can read it and make sure it's correct.
Okay.
So we ain't be on the same page?
No, it's not dogs.
They don't have the word dogs in it.
Okay, that's enough. Due to the change in the agreement that came in after the public hearing was announced, we will have a, no, that's not it, I'm reading what you said. The commission intends to put forward a motion to cancel the public hearing set for Tuesday night, August twenty-sixth at six thirty. And I'll let Commissioner Perkins give the reasons.
And part of that, yeah, I got ahead of you, I'm sorry. Uh, alright, so part of that reason for the cancellation of that, uh, public hearing is that since the public hearing was announced, I'm gonna guess, I'm gonna say it was on the twelfth. Um, I received a revised version of the agreement. So, to, in order to have a public hearing on an agreement, you have to have the public hearing and the notice go out on that particular agreement that you're gonna discuss. So, due in part to changes being made to the agreement, then it kinda nullified our public notice. So in order to have a, a, um, public hearing, we're gonna have to get the correct agreement in that. Um, and then, so that's why that's gonna be, that's why that's gonna be, uh, canceled. Uh, so, the public hearing was for, and, and let me give you a backstory real fast, if I can just get a little bit of liberty here from the chairman. Um, the area that we were discussing is commonly known to Chilton Countyans as the Flatlands, which is off County Road six oh seven, it's the Lay Lake Public Landing. Um, we, that area is an extremely pretty area, it's a boat, it's a boat launch, it's operated by the DCNR. And then the peninsula area is, uh, owned and operated by Alabama Power. So, we had reached out to Alabama Power about the potential to lease that property, and, in, in other words, uh, make another park out of that property. So, at that time, we met, uh, me, uh, Commissioner Bone, through Commissioner Williams and Commissioner Childers, met with Alabama Power and the powers to be with them, and discussed the potential to lease that property, if that was gonna be something that we might could.
Commissioner Perkins, can I interject?
Sure.
Um, when you talk about lease the property, it's, it would be similar to what we're doing at Higgins Ferry.
Correct. It, we, we wanted to, um, lease that property and turn it into a park similar to what we have at Higgins Ferry. We, however, Alabama Power, uh, in two thousand and eighteen, lost an operating permit on the Couchea chain for issuance of any new leases. They are, they are mandated on certain lands that are, uh, FERC property, and that is the Federal Energy and Regulatory Commission mandates what they can and can't do on the Alabama property, Alabama Power property, as far as activities go. So, because they do not have an operating permit for the Couchea chain, they can't enter into any leases on their, their property, so they wouldn't lease the property. So after we discussed it a couple of times with them, we came up with a memorandum of understanding or a memorandum of operation to where we were gonna enter into an agreement with them in order to cut the grass, enable us to put trash cans out on the peninsula for, uh, cleaning up the area. We would be able to go in and clean up the space, uh, maintain the bathroom situation there, clean up the bathrooms, make it a lot more presentable than, than it has been in the, in the past. Um, and that's what we were wanting to do as far as turning it into a, a green space to where, um, citizens have a nice place to go. Um, thing, another thing to do, and a, a park that we could promote. Uh, not only just to bring economic, uh, benefit to the county, but a benefit to the citizens. So, not all parks are there to generate, you know, revenue. We could still generate revenue with it as far as uh, sales tax and bringing things into the county. But this, because we weren't gonna be able to lease the property, Alabama Power was going to, at no cost to us, allow us to enter into an agreement of maintenance. That maintenance, of course, would have a cost associated with it as far as manpower and, and, um, pumping out the bathroom and emptying the garbage two, you know, two times a week, or three times a week, or whatever it was. However, um, you know, we don't, we don't look at it as, well, we're just gonna bring it in here, and we weren't gonna put RV sites and all that down there because we couldn't, cause we couldn't lease it, right? So, it was more then as a benefit to, you know, improving the quality of life for our citizens. Having a nice place to go, uh, offering bank fishing opportunities and those kinda things. Um, through some of the changes that have occurred, uh, in the, um, once the changes came in after the public hearing was announced, and then, uh, conversations for clarity, it has become, um, we're, we're in talks, let's just say, it's become apparent that we possibly can't do what we wanted to do with that area. Um, I, that, dealing with the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission is, uh, FERC property, which we do deal with at Higgins Ferry. Higgins Ferry is owned by Alabama Power. It's, it's FERC property. Alright, so they mandate what we can do and what we can't do there, even though we, we leased that property so that we can generate, we can have an RV park and stuff like that and generate some form of income off of it. This was gonna be entirely a little bit different to start with. But because of that, we've run into situations as simple as a bat nesting. Um, we, and then all the way to the point of, that they weren't gonna allow me to put a picnic table on the peninsula once we got it all cleaned up. Nice. And he said, I'm not gonna name names, but they, they said, is there a huge hangup over being able to provide picnic tables? Well, there is, in my opinion, and I, and I'll tell you why. Because we're not leasing the area and turning it into a actual revenue, revenue generating park, we're wanting to provide it to the citizens as a clean, nice area. If we're not able to do that, then it kinda defeats my purpose of entering into the agreement to begin with. Um, and here's the reason why the picnic table became an issue. The FERC permit that Alabama Power has with them only allows for a operation of a boat launch and bank fishing. So, your federal government dictates or mandates that picnicking is an activity, and that activity cannot be added to their current permit, so therefore, they can't allow us to picnic there. So, anyway, so we're working out some deal, or working out some, some issues with that. Hopefully in the future, though, I will tell you this, hopefully in the future, we are faced with a situation where they do get their permitting squared away, and we, and we are able to lease that property and turn it into something that's really nice and really a big benefit to citizens, and that was the whole purpose of the, of the agreement to begin with. So that's, that's kinda where we're at now.
Okay, any comments?
Yeah, go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, I, oh. If y'all, you could have asked a little bit, I could save you a lot of headache. Our commission before has done tried to do that, and we run into the same deal. All they want you to do is keep it clean for them for free. And we tried to do that a little bit.
Yeah.
But it got to where, um, you know, we had our litter people out there cleaning every day and couldn't do nothing to maintain the road litter, so we just saw it let it go.
Yeah. Well, I had it worked out, you know, and, and look, and, and they are still willing to possibly fix that road that goes out to peninsula. Um, so we're, we're still in some, we have a pretty good relationship with the hydro licensing group up there, and I think we've made some really good strides, and if we ever are able to lease it again, you know, it's gonna be something that I recommend we do. But, um, under the current, uh, new maintenance agreement, not the one that was before, that's, um, and, and, uh, the revelation of that, uh, through some phone calls, we, we possibly may not be able to do that, so. We'll get there, but I, I will tell you this, when it came out, I know that there was some social media, there was two or three people on social media, and that was about it yet. It got shared a few times and whatever, but I had a multitude, and I do thank these people, but I had a multitude of people that were gonna show up in support of it. Um, either by letter or in person. So, it was, it was very well received that we were gonna be able to operate this and clean it up and make it a lot better for the community. There was a lot of people that saw the benefit in it, so.
Our company lost their permit about eight years ago, maybe longer.
Two thousand and eighteen.
Two thousand and eighteen, wow, close.
Yeah, it's been a minute.
Eight, six, two, yeah. And it may be another eight, ten years before they get that permit.
If they get it off.
If they get it off. That's a federal thing that's going on between them. Now, I got two or three notes I could tell you. I wish I'd known you at the beginning, because all those guys down there just told me, I've worked, I've worked for over the years. But they have put in restrooms themselves at, uh, Neely Henry, not Neely Henry, yeah.
Yeah, Neely Henry's got one.
Uh, the lake above Neely Henry, cause we went in there and prepared the ground, infrastructure for them to put there.
Yeah, it's all wise, up in towards center, yeah.
Yeah, they did. So they have their own restrooms they could put in if you work out an agreement with them. And they are, they're prefab buildings.
Well, they have, they have restroom there.
Yeah, do they?
Mm-hmm.
They may be the same ones that we used to prepare for.
It's like a glorified outhouse, yeah.
It's an outhouse.
It's got his and hers on it.
Yeah, right, right, yeah.
So, they do that, and if you can figure out, if, at one time, they had to put in walking trails. Cause I have put miles and miles of walking trails in, and I put the playground in at Neely Henry, one at, uh, Logan Martin, one at Lake Martin, and I don't know how many cabanas and all. So, but, they were trying to do that to get their permit back. It was in the stipulation from the core engineers. So, just for a quick note of what Ken and what they have done before, what they'll do now, I don't know, but they have done it.
Well, Commissioner Billingsley, so Alabama Power, one of their huge issues, and you probably know this, is cause you've fished, you've fished for quite a while also, uh, was dissolved oxygen content of the lake. So, they, um, they were being held responsible for the dissolved oxygen content of the lake while the water was not being generated, not just while it was generated. So they had put aerators, they've done, uh, pretty much all they needed to do, and they have sent it back for a judgment, and that, and that judgment, um, we were hoping to get a judgment in June, and then we were hoping to get one in, uh, this month, and if not this month, they suspect, uh, in October, hopefully. According to their licensing guys. So ho- hopefully it's sooner than later is what we're, what we're gonna, what we're gonna lay our cards on, I guess, but.
Well, they've made them jump through some.
Oh, yes, oh, yes.
Uh, I, I would just comment that in these few minutes of commentary by Commissioner Perkins, that, that represents hours and hours and hours of research and negotiation and phone calls. And I just wanna commend you for, uh, taking on that challenge. We had a great idea, it's just that right now, the federal government will not let Alabama Power let us do what we wanna do down there. And if, if that changes, then we'll take another hard run at it.
That's all I got.
Alright, that impasse will be there for a while.
Probably so.
Uh, okay. The only thing I've got to bring up tonight is the ACCA, which is the Commissioners Association, has asked us to pass a resolution, and it'll be on the agenda tomorrow night to pass, concerning our SSUT. SSUT is the Simplified Sellers' Use Tax, which is what everybody pays when you order something off the internet. And I'm sure nobody in here orders anything off the internet, so you don't know. But, the, ma- ma- municipalities around the state, your bigger ones, are back at it again. Uh, I don't think they'll get anything this year because it's an election year. But, Tuscaloosa's mayor has filed a lawsuit. And that's concerns me a little bit about that, because it's gonna throw it into a whole new realm in, uh, in a court. So, we're gonna pass this resolution tomorrow night about the SSUT, and so you know, the SSUT is the funds that we set aside for our new courthouse. The much-needed courthouse, I might add. Uh, and twenty twenty-six is going to be a critical year in the latter part of the year for, I mean, twenty twenty-seven for the SSUT. They're gonna come at it hard. We need any and everybody to talk to your legislator and your senator and tell them to keep their hands off of it. They didn't want it back when it first passed. They didn't know what internet tax was. But when all their stores in these big cities started drying up and everybody went to the internet, well, they were losing revenue. They couldn't keep up, so now they want their hands on it. And, you know, they get a portion of it, they get a pretty good portion of it.
Yeah.
Uh, it, uh, it provides four point two billion in revenue to Alabama's general fund. The counties, I don't see it in here, and I should have looked it up. Go right ahead. Yep.
So, the state gets fifty percent of that, and the local city governments gets fifty percent of that. The states fifty percent, uh, twenty-five percent of that goes to the education trust fund. Now, back on the local governments, uh, fifty percent, sixty percent goes to municipalities. And the counties get only forty percent. And yet, you have these municipalities crying for more dollars. They just need to be more efficient with the dollars that they have, in my opinion.
Well, there's something I tried, I talked to Sonny about at our conference. You know, you go, you ride around and you look, there's not as many people in these shopping centers in these cities as there once was. They're shopping from home. And a lot of these cities gave tax incentives and abatements, and that is a good tool, if you use it wisely. If you just get somebody in, you know, so you can fill a store, and that's what they've gotten into. They're losing revenue, they're bleeding for money. And now they're coming after ours. And, like I said, we need each and every one of you this coming election year to talk to your senator, talk to the legislator, and those that are running, and tell them, leave the SSUT alone, cause it's vital for county government. Anybody else?
Well, well, I wanna, I wanna make sure that everybody understands that we're not talking about municipality just in Chilton County. We're talking about that sixty percent goes to four hundred and thirty-five municipalities all over the state. We're talking about that sixty percent goes to four hundred and thirty-five municipalities all over the state. And then that forty percent comes to the, the counties. So we're not talking about just, uh, online sales in our county. We're talking about, we get a portion of online sales throughout the state.
It's all comes into one pot, and it's divided out. And if I might add in here, you have a group of ten, your ten largest cities in this state are the ones pushing this. And if you'll go pull up their tax records, you'll see what I'm talking about. Their sales tax revenues are down. They've gone down for the last four or five years. That's why I think they're running scared. If they don't get this done, they're gonna be in trouble. And if they get it done, we'll be in trouble. So we do not need this to happen for Chilton County. We made an investment in a new courthouse, and like I said, it was something that was vitally needed, should have been done years ago, but now it's gonna be done, and this SSUT pays for it. Anybody else? Okay, well then I'll adjourn this work session until our meeting for tomorrow night at six thirty. Everybody have a good evening.